The Association of Counties is pushing a number of measures that would improve state reimbursements to the county. So, I don't think we're in an atmosphere where we're looking at cuts unexpectedly from the legislature. Both of those things make me think, if we want to find out what the answer is, if we want to know how many people benefit and who they are, now's the time to find out. So, I hope that we take a risk on behalf of our citizens and support this ordinance.
Other discussion? Commissioner Brown?
Yes, so, I would concur with Commissioner Brown and just add that perhaps we should consider some kind of limit so that we have a way to evaluate, some way of evaluating what it's costing the county, so that we are not, if things don't turn out exactly the way you're talking, we have some fallback to reevaluate because we are also talking about in a situation where we have tight budgets or FCEB that other services may suffer.
Is there a way to put a limit on this ordinance?
You can repeal an ordinance at any time. And as Abby briefed you on Tuesday, in two years, you could look at this again, but you have the ability to repeal an ordinance at any time.
So, were you talking about a timely, Commissioner Edwards, or a...
I was thinking about a sunset.
Oh, a sunset.
A sunset.
In fact, I believe if this handbook is correct, it will require to specify the taxing as to which this would apply.
Okay, you were talking about a, okay, I get it, what you're talking about. Other comments? I have a few more, but Commissioner Fuentes, Commissioner Thomas?
I do. On the face, this is a very good idea. We have a lot of retirees in our county. We have a lot of them that are going to be under the 24,000 cap for this taxing. But I also look at the realities of funding. But knowing right now that we may be in a position to absorb something, I would really consider, you know, getting some good data as to this year. Now, the only thing that worries me is that the use of this ordinance would only increase. So, one year's, the first year's data wouldn't be what is truly going to be out there. I think as people learn about it, and I know we're going to publish it and all that, but even as to what we have right now for the seniors and in freezing their tax, I don't think they're all taking advantage of that. So, I think that as people, you know, and it's probably going to be word of mouth, is they learn more about it, then there's going to be more use of it. So, I think I am really, really tending to lean towards trying this for at least one year and see what happens.
And, you know, looking at this and, you know, Commissioner Brown is correct in what he, you know, what he said, you know, during the campaign, I did notice that there were some people out there that, you know, especially elderly people, and I know this isn't just specific to that, you know, it's something that's on gross income. And I would love to help those people, this county. My biggest thing right now is what I'm looking at or what's racing through my mind is, if I'm correct, last, the work session, you know, we may be losing like over $200,000, $200,000 in some taxes that we're getting. You know, that's one issue. Also, you know, with Commissioner Edwards, what she said, you know, if we do this, where else may we hurt these people as far as the services that we provide for them? Because taking $236,000 here, it's not a good thing, you know.
I think the maximum we estimated was $100,000, not $200,000.
That's the $236,000 that we're not getting if we had budgeted for, you know, is it bill?
Oh, copper, that was a copper.
The copper, yeah, that's right.
So, you know, looking at that, you know, the other thing is, are we doing a disservice to our department heads? Are we doing a disservice after our elected officials that have certain goals that they want to accomplish throughout the year? And they depend heavily on their budget. And I know budget time's coming up here soon to where they're going to be asking for certain things, and I see that. And would it be fair for them down the road for us to change their goals or their strategies as to how they want to go into the fiscal year by going back and having to trim or having to cut or maybe even affecting employee, you know, some of our county employees? You know, it breaks my heart, you know. You know, I would love to do this. I don't think we have the data to, at this point, to see what it's actually going to cost, what it's not going to cost. Would I love to try it? Yeah, probably would love to try it, and help out anybody, it breaks my heart. But what, what are we going to do to our county and what are we going to do to our residents as far as the services? You know, that's a question that I'm taking a step back and thinking about and doing that and maybe putting, even like you said, a say clause on it would work, I'm not sure right now. But that's what I'm thinking and because even our elected officials, we always have to remember that not only as commissioners you run for office, they also run for office. And they also, you know, have things that they want to do and we have other department heads. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. As far as, oh, sorry, just a second, Steve, I was going to say something, then I'll, I appreciate you raising your hand. Commissioner Brown's comments about the state being flushed with money, that's true. I see that as being very short-lived. For lack of a better word, it looks like we're in a very quiet vehicle already. And oil and gas revenues, oil is already down around $50 a barrel. I don't know why our state can't see the deficit that's coming. It's up, it's down, it's been that way for long enough, we should be able to see the cycle. And we should be able to see that lower flesh now, it's, we're going to have a deficit too. As far as taking a risk, I'm a risk taker with my own money, and I feel like it's appropriate to risk the services and the budget for the county. Once we, I also don't think that this is something that we can just try and see how it works. Once we implement, it'll be very hard to remove because it'll, at that point, it will be a tax increase on low-income households. I think it'd be very hard to get rid of it once we implement it. Mr. Anderson?
I'm not necessarily against this. What I'm against is the process that it involves. You're not going to have good data, I would say, even if it went four years, because of the way that it works. I get the money, I collect the money, and then the state sends us a bill for what they, the taxpayers get the rebate from. So, to me, that makes Charlene's and Linda's job harder because they're going to have to say, "I've got that money in my pocket, but I don't know how much of that I'm going to have to give back to the state." It depends on how many residents claim it. And as they get the knowledge and education about the tax, there's going to be more and more people, just like I'm sure Mr. Torrieta can attest, we still have people that are 65 and over that don't claim the freeze on their value, just because they, whatever reason that they may have. It may be the $32,000 limit, but that, there's works right now in the legislature to raise that. Some say 45, some say 48,000 for the freezing of the value. Now, there also are some joint resolutions that are being considered now to eliminate taxes. So, if you get into this, you may be, I don't know, not really jumping the gun, but there's some joint resolutions up there that are set up to anyone 75 years or older with $15,000 or less income will pay no property tax. There is also anybody of any age that is 100% disabled will also, and income of less than $15,000, will also pay no property tax. So, you're, you know, we need to realize, you want to say the landmines that are sitting on the, on the road up ahead to, but like I say, my biggest hesitation or whatever would be that we're not going to know for a long time how that's going to affect, how it really, the bottom line is going to be affected because we don't know who's going to claim it. And for us to continue the assessments and then the taxing, collecting the taxes, and then, we have it, but we don't. But we don't know what those numbers are going to be until they file their tax return with the state the following year, and then the state bills us for it. You know, it's, it's a little bit risky, I think. I don't know, but it's a good thing for those that do claim it and can claim it. But, so, still ultimately, your guys' decision and just my, my opinion, so.
Thank you. Other comment?
I have a question from Mr. Mendez. So, do you think that it would take at least four years to run this course before we have stable data to say, "Hey, this is going to cost the county X number of dollars per year"?
I believe so. Plus, the fact that when you go to, if you say that's too much, it's going to be hard to tell people, "Sorry, but we're not going to do it because it'll be a tax increase." I mean, my recommendation, suggestion, whatever, would be wait and see what happens in the legislature this year and see if those resolutions become state statute to eliminate that. They're also going to increase, like I said, they're trying to increase the 65 and older income level for more people to qualify. So, we're going to be hit with some of that as well. So, I, I would say, if, you know, if there's a way to delay this, like, I guess it's only every two years, from my understanding, you can do it.
We have to do it every two years. But I believe you should consider it more often if you wanted to.
Okay. So, I mean, I, like I said, my suggestion would be to wait to see what pans out at the legislature this session, and then if we have, if we get hit with those, we're going to lose, I think, a lot of revenue. If they do raise the limit, the wage earnings for the 65 and under for freezing their value, and there's a lot of misconceptions and misunderstandings on that, but, you know, those are issues that we just have to deal with. But like I say, if they do eliminate the total taxation on those disabled people and 75 and older with a low income, and there's also talk about $15,000 is nothing, so we need to bump that up and, so, you know, they may not go anywhere. I mean, that's also the risk that you're taking. But maybe, if you could bring it up again next year, maybe, but I think if you can give the legislature this, this chance to see how that outcomes to, whether it comes to fruition or not, you know.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
Mr. Anderson, I have a question. So, on the $15,000 thing, is that, it's 75, not 65?
That's to be eliminated. Taxes altogether.
So, for people 75?
That's what's on the, on the boilerplate right now, that anybody 75 or over with income of less than 15, and it's, the first thing they're trying to change is the income. But it would be zero taxes on that property.
Mr. Chairman, our members? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I would just like to reiterate that we do have the 65-year and older valuation freeze, and I do want to thank one of my employees here, that she's going to be handling a lot of the applications. Her name is Audra Hernandez, and I'm so glad that she's actually participating in this wonderful meeting. I would just like to bring up a couple of issues. I do attend just about every meeting that has to do with taxation and revenue. I've been doing it for the last four decades. And after the last prediction for the legislative finance, in a couple of years, we might be looking into a very major problem with oil and gas, and it's going to really impact a lot of the, of the communities, the smaller communities, due to the oil and gas. Once again, and I'm also glad that I can actually work with our county manager very closely on what's going on with our revenue source and our, and our valuation. We have one of the biggest exemptions here in the state of New Mexico on the head of household, veteran exemption, 100% exemption, and it does erode our tax base. One thing that I would like to also state is that our copper production has shown a negative within the last two years. We don't know where we're going to be going on that. We've lost over $240,000 in property taxes in the last year. How do we remake up this difference? It's quite difficult. Property taxes are not the answer. Our legislature looks at it, it is the answer. Why are we going to take another hit for our taxpayers that are going to be supporting on the low-income portion of it? They are in the process of increasing the head of household exemption, and actually with the Census Bureau, out of 11,000 households, we have a 4,977 that qualify for the head of household, and that's 2,000 off your taxable value. Also, the 100% exemption has overrode 9 million off our tax. We do need these exemptions. We need them. But I don't think property tax is actually going to be the actual answer. It's a one-time shot for these low-income rebates. I'm off board. It's a one-shot deal. But once again, we don't know how to, how we're going to budget, how much money we're going to actually, going to take out of our budget. We do need employees. We do need to go out there and grab the low-hanging fruit that's out there to put it on the assessment to be fair and equitable with everybody. The bottom line is, is that, let's just be fair with everybody. Right now, they're in the process of passing a bill where they're going to increase 50% on our gasoline tax. We're going to look at revenue loss next year and the year that's coming up. I am going to do a major campaign, thanks to the county prosecutor's office and my wonderful employees, that we are going to seek and find the 65-year-olds so we can help them out on the valuation freeze. And thanks to Steve, he actually helps out also. And hopefully, we'll see what's going to happen with this other complete exemption for the 75-year-old. So, we are here, and the main thing that we talked in the work session is the low-income seniors is what we really need to talk about. What happened to the mines closed? We have a lot of young individuals working. They'll be on the low-income base. They have opportunities to look for jobs. It is a very big issue, and right now, I don't think that the county is going to take the, on taking a small, low revenue, and I understand that, Harry, that it's only $100,000. But right now, I'm looking at big projects in our office to fix all our parcel mapping, and we're looking at about $300,000 on that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Board members.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Okay. I feel like we now have a lot more. So, on the question of delaying to see what legislation comes out, there is not a single year that that argument will apply. Every single year, there's legislation introduced that can be dramatic in its effect, right? It just happens every year. So, that argument, I don't, I hope nobody is swayed by that one. The measures you mentioned that would cut property taxes, interestingly, would have the effect of reducing the impact of this ordinance, because those are folks who would qualify for this ordinance, the tax rebate, who would then not be paying any taxes, and so the ordinance's effect on them would be zero. So, while those could impact, will impact if they pass, our bottom line, as far as this ordinance is concerned, they would make it less of an impact. Several people have mentioned the freeze. Do not think you're trading apples for apples if you think the freeze replaces this rebate. The freeze is an order of magnitude smaller in its effect on people, right? It's just preventing growth. It prevents a maximum of 3% growth a year. The growth might not even be 3% a given year that it prevents. So, the impact of that is, I'm glad it's there, but it's not, it's not huge. The head of household exemption, right, that comes to $40 at a rate of $10,000. That also doesn't compare to a benefit of $250 to $350 a year, but it's just $40. Furthermore, that exemption applies to people of all incomes. Wealthy people receive that as well as poor people. If I had my way, I would easily end it, trade away that exemption to fund the lower-income benefit that's provided by this ordinance. And you emphasize that maybe it should be seniors only. Well, I would say two things. One, it will be almost, it will be primarily seniors, because those are folks who are able to own a house even though they have a low income, because generally, they're on fixed income, by this time of year, hopefully, have paid off their house over their working life. A lot of low-income folks have to rent, they can't buy a house, so they will not benefit from this. So, it does mostly impact, impact seniors. But I would also say, those are not the only folks deserving of our concern. At my school, I see all the time the inability of young parents to pay for lunches and for small school trips for their children, and they're working, that they're working in minimum wage jobs. So, I believe they also deserve this kind of a break. Those are the points I wanted to make.
Thank you. Did someone have further comment?
You know, so, hearing what you said and all that, I guess one other question I would have, it would, it would hit, it would hit this fiscal year, but down the road, or would it hit the next fiscal year?
The next.
The next fiscal year? And, you know, my only other concern is, if we do go this route, you know, are we going to be faced with not being up here trying to make up the money somewhere else, maybe by tax increase, or, or now we're giving money, and which well-deserved, and I'm not against that, but are we going to be up here now voting on raising taxes to make up this money because of the uncertainties? You know, and are we going to just, in another roundabout way, take that money back from them? You know, I think, to me, the prudent thing would be to, you know, revisit this, maybe in a year or so, and let's see what, and I understand what you said, Commissioner Brown, about, you know, legislative and all that, and this way, but, you know, maybe we do need to make sure that that doesn't happen because, you know, we, I mean, right now, I'm sitting here, yeah, okay, we give them a rebate, but then, you know, six months, seven months down the road, here we are, sitting up there voting on raising taxes. What did we just do to them? You know, what did, what did we do to our employees and our services? You know, and that's my concern.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners?
I would just like to remind you of a few things, and Harry brought this up, that our cash reserves have increased substantially in the last three years. And every elected official in every department heading here has worked very hard at cutting their budgets, cutting positions, with the anticipation that we would build that up and we would be able to do the things that needs to happen in their offices in order to better serve our constituents. I also want to remind you of how volatile our revenue stream is. We rely heavily on PILT. It comes from the federal government. I don't think I have to say anything else. Security role schools, do you remember what happened last fiscal year? We lost 750,000, just like that. And what did we have to do? Every one of these hard-working individuals had to make substantial cuts to their budget in order to make up that. Detention costs, insurance costs, I've had that discussion with each one of you. You sat through some of that discussion last week. That's not getting any better, it's getting worse. The population we are serving costs us more and more every year. And you'll see that in my budget request coming up. And so, I'm thinking about that, how do we pay for that? But yet, you're proposing cutting some more revenue in order to pay for those things. Those are things we're statutorily obligated to pay for. Copper tax, here's a perfect example. You know, we get those figures from the state, correct me if I'm wrong, Earl, that are supposed to be pretty set in stone. We take a $236,000 hit, that's pretty substantial. I just, you know, we can't stop that bleeding, but now we want to add more. I just, I really urge you to please reconsider this, considering how heavily we rely on revenue that we have absolutely no control over whatsoever.
Thank you. Further public comment at this public hearing?
So, Mr. Chair, I do have one more thing to say. I think that, so, we've heard a whole bunch of different things about this topic, and I think there's sort of, there's, I think at the bottom line, there's two fundamental issues here. One is that we have a population of people in this community that are suffering economically, and we have unreliable, that we, that as a county, we depend heavily on unreliable sources of revenue. It occurs to me that this ordinance is forcing us to consider this topic in a way that may not be appropriate. In other words, can we, instead of being forced into this, by this, forced into this conversation by this ordinance, is there another way we can address the issue of our low-income people in this community are suffering? And, you know, is there another way to address that other than to address it with an unstable revenue source? Just a thought.
And do you have an answer to your question?
Because that's...
It's just a question.
You've been working on this for 10 years or more. I don't see many handles for us to work on that question.
I agree, there aren't many handles, without a doubt. But we also are not taking advantage of the handles, the few handles that we do have at the moment, because you've put me on the spot, I can only think of one.
You put yourself in.
Okay, agreed. But, you know, one of the things that I know to be true from the work that I've done in the mining district is that one of the issues is that places a lot of pressure on people with fixed income is how high their utility bills are. And one of those utility bills is water. And, you know, the way that we could address that is to have fully funded the regional water project with New Mexico unit funds. And, you know, so there, we're not actually, I think, looking at the few handles that we have enough. And so, my thought is, if we really have a commitment, and it sounds like all five of us have acknowledged and have a commitment to the fact that we have people in this community that are suffering, particularly seniors, suffering economically, then let's look at a different way to address that.
Well, I agree on that, looking at that. You know, and I don't have the answer, but I'm going to ask the question. I mean, after we, after legislative session, after the budgets, you know, we go through the budget, look at the budget, can this be brought up also? And I think it was answered earlier, to where we may take a look at this and then go from there and see what possibly can be done with this. Would that be possible?
I think we can, I, we could consider that.
Okay. But that's, that's how I would feel more comfortable with, once we figure out, and every year's going to be different naturally, that what we get this year is what's going to be there next year, but I would feel more comfortable there because, you know, sometimes the more you try to help, the more harm you do in certain things. But I'm with you, I mean, on this, as far as looking at it, maybe a little later.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to close this public hearing.
I have one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Really, I want a clarification either to Mr. Torrieta or Mr. Mendez. So, the way that people would get this refund is going through their income tax, when they file for their income taxes. But, at the end game, it comes out of the county pocket.
And that's, like I say, that's my only objection, is that we collect it, and then who knows how much of that we're going to have to give back? We don't know until people file their taxes and tax and revenue sends us the bill. So, it's, to me, it's... So, it's, to me, it's, there should be a different mechanism, if anything, you know, give them the, whether it's a rebate, not a rebate, but a, an exemption of some kind, so we don't even get the money, because that way we, if we don't have it, we don't have it. But we don't, the hard part is, you get it, and then you have to give it back.
We can't just give out exemptions.
That's a slave function. Yeah, but, yeah, and lobbying the legislature to get it done.
No, but what I'm thinking is, maybe in line over here, you know, we can put something in place, and we can do something specific just to the county, just for us, that we don't, we can provide some relief, but it doesn't have to be related to this issue.
Something more predictable.
We can come up with a better light bulb. Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved that we close this public hearing, is there a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C, consideration of ordinance O-191, entitled, previously entitled. Is there a motion to disapprove?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, others opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, the ordinance has been disapproved. At this time, we'd like to have public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who'd like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. By raise of hand, public comment? Yes, sir.
Good morning, I'm Glenn Griffin, and I'm here to talk about the county's wildlife services contract. But first, I digress. Not a beer party, but a pizza party. In the late, I have a solution for your property taxes. In the late nineteen eighties, the mine's property taxes fell from twelve million a year to two million a year. Two hundred and eighty-eight million in lost property taxes in Grant County. That might be your answer you're looking for. Back to wildlife services. Wildlife services is a blank check. For Grant County, it's a part-time job that pays eighty-two dollars and fifteen cents an hour, a very lucrative part-time job, and expensive service that isn't valuable to all of us Grant County taxpayers. Your contractor also works part-time for Hidalgo County in wildlife services. Brandon Jones has a boss, Rodolfo Fajardo. I spoke to him at length on January third. He and Brandon Jones, Grant County's contractor for wildlife services, are both currently on federal layoff, so no trapping or wildlife services are currently taking place in Grant County. Even though Grant County is obligated to pay seven thousand dollars for the little over a month that you haven't had the wildlife services, what a waste of money. Our Grant County taxpayer's share of this part-time job is twenty-five thousand a year for Brandon's salary and benefits. The county will be asked to raise its share from twenty-five thousand to thirty-nine thousand a year in the future, like other counties currently pay for wildlife services. We're grandfathered, because we've been under the wildlife services so long, we get a lower rate, but they're asking to raise it to thirty-nine thousand. That, the county's portion could be used to remove feral cattle along the Gila River, cattle grazing in the Riparian Willows and Cotton Woods. With some effort, the affected ranchers could be paid or hired, hire a hired gun for considerably less than eighty-two dollars and fifteen cents an hour. This would save ranchers and their check-off head tax, and taxpayers of Grant County thousands of dollars a year. It could also fund two full-time sheriff's deputies. What a concept. Who and where were the cooperators are not listed in your required report. Fajardo said he will attempt to break out the public land from private land. This is important, because trapping is no longer allowed on state land in Los Alamos County, Colorado, and Arizona. How many hours did our contractor work for wildlife services? That's anyone's guess, it's nowhere in your mandated report. If he worked a thousand hours a year for Grant County, and I doubt it, that would be eighty-two dollars and fifteen cents an hour. How many hours did he work this past quarter, from October to December? You guys got a report? I don't think so. The hours, the locations, the methods that you mandated in July, that he had to report, are nowhere listed. This amounts to a blank check. There's some of the money you're looking for.
Please state your name for the record.
Yes, sir. My name's Al Gamboa, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and of course, county staff, thank you very much for the opportunity. And very brief, just a warm welcome to the new members of the commission, and of course, current staff that just came on board, all except for Rol, of course, he's a ref, just get it, Rol, you know your butt, buddy. But anyways, purpose of my brief statement here is, we have Grant County days coming up in Santa Fe, Prospector Days up there, I'm sure we're going to be very well represented up there. My current position is Highway 180. We all know what a big bottleneck it happens to be, it's our main artery coming in here. Yet, on New Year's Day, two-way up, lost a very close personal childhood friend, neighbor, and everybody knows who that is, Omar Leguizamo. Anyways, what I'd like to do is make a request, I know we're going to have that great presence up there, is to please make the governor and all our civic leaders up there aware of the fact that that highway does need to be addressed. We've all lost somebody that we hold dearly on that stretch of road, and I certainly hate to see that continue. We paid for it in accordance for the fact that those funds had been allocated and somehow got distracted and pulled up someplace else. We're highly deserving of that, but finally be expanded to where it should be to handle the short traffic that's going to occur. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Van Allred, I'm the District Three County Commissioner, Catron County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, and staff for giving me the opportunity to come here today. And I just mostly wanted to welcome the two new Commissioners to this staff, and let Grant County know that in my past seven years serving as the county commissioner, y'all been great neighbors to the, probably the first people that reached out to me in a kind of lost incentive with Commissioner Gaston, past, and Gabe Romes. And they really should tell you a little bit more about the rubber meat in the road when you're newly elected Commissioners. But I know you've already been through time, you've got a long agenda today. I look forward to serving with you guys, with your neighbors. I know you went through a lengthy process, as we did, for picking a new Senator, and I think that Senator Romes will do us a great job, and I want to thank you for all of your work on that, and doing that, and welcome you on board. And as your neighbor, if I can help you out, I'm glad to be in District 28 with you. Thank you all.
Further public input? Further public input? Seeing none, we'll continue. With approval of the minutes, is there a motion to approve the five meeting minutes that are before us?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item B, E, F, G, and H.
Is there a second?
A second.
So, we move in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved. Is there a motion to approve the January twenty eighteen, sorry, January eighteenth, twenty nineteen expenditure report?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Motion to approve the inventory of transfers and deletions.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? All right, motion carries. Territorial Day Charter Proclamation, Assistant, Charlie.
Thank you very much, Chairman, Board Members, and we do have a charter day coming up on the sixteenth of February, and I really appreciate the proclamation that we will probably be, do you want me to go ahead and give the schedule now, or do you want me to wait after the proclamation there, Mr. Chairman, Board Members?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said, can I give the schedule now and what's going on on that day, if I may?
Sure.
Thank you very much. On February sixteenth, from nine AM, we have the Urban Challenge Run, so Chris, get your tennis shoes out so you can run three miles. And we're actually going to have the Love Local from eleven AM to five PM. We have the Horse and Wagon Rides downtown, Boulder, Broadway, and we are going to have our community group tables, and also our mayor volunteer signs up, sign up, excuse me. At eleven AM to twelve PM, we're going to have a presentation about mine with Neil Eckler, and also with, you know, Mr. Kevin Cook. At one PM to one-thirty, we're going to have branding signs for the New Mexico song, Brandy Sides, that's actually her name, and she's actually going to sing the New Mexico song, and it's all going to be happening at the Murray Hotel. We're also going to have a reenactment for the charter reading from a hundred and some odd years ago. From two PM to three PM, we're actually going to have the Girl Scouts signing their New Mexico songs and singing them, and discussing about New Mexico. Two-thirty to three PM, we're going to have the Silver City Stompers and their line dance. And we're going to have a gentleman by the name of Danny Corleva and Bio Seco, talk about New Mexico songs and playing New Mexico songs, and we're also going to have the Square Dancers out there. At two to four PM, we're going to have the Mining and Geology for the Tour Fields trip to, with Neil Eckler, and we have the Wonderful Ball, and it's going to start rolling at seven PM at the Murray Hotel, and we're going to have the Illusion Band. Sorry to say that we're going to be missing one of the baddest guitar players, but they do have a substitute to that, so Illusion Bands will be playing. It's going to be an exciting time, and any questions, Mr. Chairman, Board Members?
No, thank you.
Yeah, I have one. Is that in the woods, the fastest elected official that there is?
Yeah, absolutely. And I do believe it works for all the vehicle, but we'll talk about that, but you can't bring your bicycle, okay? Is that all right? That's all.
Okay. Can you read the proclamation first, or who's going to do that?
No, you go ahead. I can have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Board. Whereas on Saturday, February sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, Silver City will celebrate the hundred and thirty-ninth anniversary of the signing of the Town of Silver City territorial charter by Governor Samuel Axtell on February fifteenth, eighteen seventy-eight. Silver City is the oldest continuously incorporated municipality in New Mexico. On January twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, the Town Council of the Town of Silver City adopted a resolution designating the Saturday closest to February fifteenth as territorial charter day. The day has been set aside to celebrate the unique historical evolution that has helped shape Silver City into the community that it is today. This year's celebration will begin with a ceremony at the Silver City Museum, three twelve West Broadway, at ten-thirty AM on Saturday, February sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, followed by a program of traditional music from the late eighteen hundreds. And whereas the events leading up to the adoption of the Silver City territorial charter are historically significant, Grant County was formed in eighteen sixty from the western portion of Doniana County. After Silver was discovered in eighteen seventy, the town site was laid out and the name for fledging community selected. In eighteen seventy-one, Silver City was designated as a Grant County seat. At the time, Silver City inventory of building included two hundred and eighty-four dwelling, five smoking furnaces, two hotels, two printing offices, a livery stable, a jewelry shop, a watchmaker shop, two shoemakers, six court mills, ten retail shops, three bakeries, three meat markets, a brewery, four carpenter shops, two blacksmiths, a lumberyard, and a brickyard. And whereas in eighteen seventy-two, community leaders proposed a bill to the New Mexico Legislature that authorized the incorporation of Silver City. The bill failed to pass, and a feeling of unrest started to grow in the community. Community leaders felt that the needs of Silver City were not being recognized by the government official in Santa Fe. Making matters worse, the Republican administration reduced the number of legislative representatives from the predominantly Democratic counties of Doniana, Grant, and Lincoln, from four to two, thus decreasing representation from the area to the territorial government. And whereas Silver City leaders were feeling disenfranchised, and thus the seeds for a succession movement had been sown. Led by residents of Silver City who had a growing disenchantment with New Mexico, Grant County petitioned the federal government to become part of the Arizona Territory. The leaders felt that Grant County was more economically, politically, and culturally aligned with Arizona than with New Mexico. Grant County waited until eighteen seventy-six, a hundredth anniversary of the founding of the United States, to propose legislation that would allow Grant County to succeed from New Mexico. The Arizona territorial representative introduced the bill, but it died in committee and was never acted on. And whereas subsequent to the failure of succession efforts, the Silver City leaders regrouped and obtained a sponsor for a bill authorizing a territorial charter day for Silver City that was introduced to the New Mexico Legislature on January thirty-first, eighteen seventy-eight. The bill unanimously, and was signed, the bill passed unanimously and was signed into law on February fifteenth, eighteen seventy-eight. With a newly Grant and Harlan territorial charter, Silver City residents could elect city official and participate in self-governance. The charter allowed for collecting taxes to be used for public improvements, such as streets and sidewalks, and providing for public safety. Obtaining the territorial charter allowed the fledging community to achieve even greater growth and prosperity. Now therefore be resolved by the Grant County Commissioners that February sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen be declared as territorial charter day in Grant County, New Mexico.
Good. Now, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
How do we approve the resolution?
A second. So, we move in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Present that.
Well, you guys are coming down, it's time to say I will be up in Santa Fe on that day, because I was just recently elected for the Board of Directors for the New Mexico Counties, and we're also actually going to have the New Mexico County Day on the fifteenth of February, so I actually sit in for Juan Patron, Representative in eighteen seventy-six, so Al Gamboa in the back room is going to have to wear my outfit so he can actually represent me as Juan Patron, so you might have to, you know, trim down a little bit there. You got it. You made sure you show up to the challenge run, all right?
I always knew you wanted to be Patron.
Hey.
Been in politics the last hundred and thirty years.
Regional Annual Airport Conference in Hurst, Texas.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve our state travel for Rebecca Winger to attend the FAA conference.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Consideration of Statement of Assurances under the local DWI grant and distribution program, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item N, Manager Webb.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioners, um, under this item, we do not have a, um, slate of officers for the Cliff Hill Volunteer Fire Department, so we will need to consider that at a later date, so we're asking for you to consider approval of items two through nine, which is Fort Barry, Lower Members, Pino Salto, Sanorito, Sapiro, Tyrone, Upper Members, and Whiskey Creek only.
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item O, Manager Webb.
Under consideration of the Service Report EMS Fund Act, um, applications, um, Whiskey Creek will not have an application this year, so they will submit one next year, so asking for your approval of items one through six, which consists of Hila Regional, Hila Valley, Pino Salto's, uh, then the three districts for the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department.
Does Whiskey Creek, uh, sort of pull up credit in applying, will you?
No, sir, um, it's an annual application, and they have some, um, they're lacking on a few requirements to qualify for this year, so they're working on those, and they'll come back next year with an application.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, we approve the EMS Fund Act Assurances, uh, Report. The manager has asked to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries. Aye, aye. I heard it, even though it wasn't spoken.
That's right.
Agenda item P, Discussion Process Regarding New Mexico Senate Seat District Twenty-Eight Vacancy Letter Submitted to Governor, uh, Michelle Lujan Gershon. Commissioner Brown.
Seems that I'll need to wait, since I believe that Commissioner, uh, Sal Smith played a role in this.
Okay. Moving on to agreements. Uh, Items Q and R are both related to DWI. Uh, is it okay if we consider those at the same time? Is there a motion to approve?
And, uh, just a second, let me call it, uh...
Uh, Q, sorry, it's Q and R.
Oh, okay.
If you're gonna do them all?
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you. Q, R, and S. This is consideration of Amendment to Agreement Eight, Eighteen, Nine, Professional Services Agreement between Grant County and the DWI Program, and Chris Helger, uh, doing business as the Recovery Management Center. Item R is consideration of Memorandum of Understanding with the Department of Finance and Administration for the DWI Program, and Item S is consideration of Department of Health Assurances and Cooperative Agreement with the Department of Finance and Administration.
Is there, I've lost the manager. Is there any reason not to approve these as a package? Yeah, okay. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agreements, A, Eighteen oh nine, A, Nineteen oh two, and A, Nineteen oh three.
Is there a second? I'll, I'll second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Yes.
Aye.
Motion approved. Uh, Item T, I move we approve Agreement Number A, Nineteen oh five, with the New Mexico Department of Transportation through its Aviation Division for terminal building renovation and code compliance at the Grant County Airport. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Fallis is back, shall we return to, uh...
Yes. So we'll return to Item P on the agenda, Discussion of the Process Regarding New Mexico Senate Seat Twenty-Eight Vacancy Letter Submitted to Governor Michelle Lujan Gershon. And this is Commissioner Brown's Agenda Item.
And this is really just a matter of, of improving my understanding of how, of what happened, uh, but also partly, as you literally say earlier, I would like us to be able to work, uh, you know, as a team, and, uh, that was a situation where I felt like, uh, we weren't, in at least case, all the members didn't have all the information. Uh, so, if it's possible to, to describe to me, how was, the decision was made to send the letter, uh, to the governor? I realized that we had made the decision we made, which was the nomination, and I'm not trying to go back on that, uh, then the governor sent us a letter. I requested a special meeting so we could discuss it, because it's important to me that we communicate with each other, and, uh, that didn't happen. Uh, and then the next thing I knew, I had an email saying that, uh, we needed to send a letter. I wasn't sure on what authority we needed to send a letter, but that was the phrase. It wasn't that we can't, or that we should, it was that we needed to. And then the next thing I heard was we had sent it, even though I had said I thought it was premature, so if people could fill in those blanks, I'd appreciate it.
I requested that the letter sent be sent, but maybe Manager Webb could best, uh, describe that process.
So I would be happy to explain what I did, because I'm the one that sent it, and I'll take full responsibility. Um, I did receive, um, I believe, a phone call from Commissioner Billings, that he had been contacted by the governor's office that we needed to submit a letter, very similar to what Katron and Socorro Counties did. Um, I had reached out prior to that, um, to the attorney who sent us the letter, um, because I felt as though we had already complied with her request. The specific language towards the end of the letter said, "Submit."
Just, just, 'cause I need to be clear, the person we sent to was, was Matthew?
Matthew.
And he's the person who sent the wish a letter, is he also the person who asked us to send?
I, I don't know, I can, just, if you can give me a chance to explain what I did, I can't speak for the conversation. Um, the chairman contacted me.
I'm trying to explain.
I'm just, so, um, I did attempt to reach out to him, because I thought we had complied with the request. We submitted a name from our county, which is what she was asking the other two to consider. I thought we had nothing else that we needed to do. I was contacted by Chairman Billings, um, Tuesday morning, and was asked, um, that he was notified that we needed to send a letter. Um, and perhaps this is where you can clarify what my authority is as the county manager. Um, in my job description, it very clearly says that I am to execute any of your decisions and policies. The decision was made, you voted three to two to submit Gabriel Ramos's name. Um, I did not really see the harm in sending the letter. Um, I drafted the letter in the time, um, that I spoke with Mr. Billings, I sent, um, I reached out to each one of you, saying that we needed to send this letter, and maybe "need" is a poor choice of words, but the way it was explained to me is Grant County was holding up the process for getting a senator appointed to District Twenty-Eight, which not only affected our citizens, it affected the citizens of Katron and Socorro Counties. So I interpret that in, from my standpoint, as a need. So therefore I drafted the letter, I heard back from the majority of you that, yes, we need to send a letter, but the decision was made, there was no harm in doing so. Um, and as all of you know, there was a considerable amount of discussion between, um, me and each one of you individually, from the time we received the letter on Saturday evening, as to what the process would be. I did not get an overwhelming, um, response to schedule a special meeting, so therefore I did not do that. So I thought I was acting in my parameters as a county manager, and I will take full responsibility. I don't think that you can look to any of the others. Um, I did, I reached out to all five of you, heard back from three of you, and so I moved forward with what I...
You must have heard back from four of us, because you heard back from me as a minute.
Well, as after the fact, but, um...
Right away when you texted.
Well, I don't believe you actually said, "No," you said you had a...
Said I believe it was premature.
Felt that you was premature, and that you had someone else that you would...
So was I one of the three or were the four?
Okay, so I heard that from four of you, three in favor of...
Okay.
But I will just say, I am taking a hundred percent responsibility for sending the letter, as I felt that it was in my parameters as county manager to carry out your decision that was made on January third.
Well, I'd like to say, if someone wrote a letter to the editor in the press and, um, accused me of, of actually asked me to apologize to the governor for not responding, and, um, so we had already responded at, uh, maybe we're gonna respond anyhow, but partially at my request.
I hope you're not conflating my question with that letter, because...
Okay.
I absolutely nothing to do with that letter, and I don't even agree with that letter.
Oh, no, no, I, yeah, yeah, no. The letter to the editor?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, I did wanna respond to the governor, I thought, when the, when the governor sends you a letter, I think you need to respond to it, I actually agree with the, whoever wrote that in the paper, we did need to respond to the governor. I don't agree that I owe the governor of an apology, because I wanted to respond to the letter, and, and of course we did. I think the letter was very courteous, um, that Manager Webb wrote. He just said that we're in receipt of your letter regarding the selection of Gabe Ramos to succeed the Senate Twenty-Eighth seat from Lieutenant Governor Howie Morales. Pursuant to your request, Grant County has submitted a name for your consideration from Grant County, and, and that's, uh, I think what we needed answered. The other two counties, Katron and Socorro County, have already responded to the governor. And I, you've probably seen copies of their letters, too.
So, seems to me the only question left over here that hasn't been answered is, who communicated with you saying we needed to send the second letter?
I had, uh, I had actually, um, more than one communication, and one of them was Senator Ramos, uh, nominee himself. He, I think, texted me or emailed and said, uh, "Can I get a letter from you guys to the governor?" So, and actually, I think his words were, "I need a letter, I need you guys to write a letter."
Can I, can I weigh in on this? Because, again, this is something that is so difficult to the county, so I, I wanted to do my due diligence, and know that we had done the right thing, so, you know, I read between the lines on that letter, and I got a copy of the letter that, uh, the governor's council sent. So, it said, to me, it says, uh, "We probably wanna be looking at somebody different, so submit another name." But I was, my thought was, well, we submitted a name already, but I'm gonna do my due diligence, because I do not want Grant County to lose that representation from here. So what I did was I called Martha Salas, the chairperson of Socorro County, and she told me that they were going to continue to support Mr. Ramos. But again, I didn't take that for, you know, as gospel. Uh, she just happened to be teaching, uh, the class that I was attending the next morning, and I saw a copy of the draft of both Katron County and Socorro County, so I said, "Hey, you know, we don't have to worry about losing the rep from, from here." And then, uh, I think I'm, I'm the one that called Charlie and I said, you know, "Maybe what we need to do is send a letter reaffirming the decision that was already made," well knowing that we were not gonna be in danger of losing Grant County representation.
So this is really helpful for me, and I appreciate the time and having discussion, because I think at that point it becomes clear that there was a majority that wanted to send the follow-up letter. It's very hard, when we're not having a meeting, and when we know we can't discuss these issues legally, uh, with each other, to understand what's happening. So, the fact that you made that call, that's very helpful to me.
And I think that's one of our greatest drawbacks, that discussions we have are going to be made in a public setting, so we can't just, you know, throw back, uh, pros and cons or different situations, uh, but I will tell you that, uh, uh, when I spoke to Martha, uh, uh, Mr. Ford and Mr. Billings, they hadn't even arrived yet, 'cause I, I drove up the night before, and I was there at eight o'clock in the morning, and that's when I spoke to Martha, and they didn't show up later till, I don't know, ten, eleven o'clock. And then I did, I don't remember, I told Mr. Ford and Mr. Billings, you know, I, I called, I called Charlie and I told her that we might wanna send a letter. It had, there had been an issue anyway for the possibility of us losing the seat from our county. I would've said, "Let's call a special meeting," and, and that was my initial response to that.
Well, I, I think can answer to your other question, uh, you know, I have a, a meeting to discuss, we had already had a meeting and, and made that recommendation, and sometimes I feel like this commission has been like a bunch, a group of chickens in the, in the chicken coop, and you have people standing around throwing rocks or throwing feet or whatever, and we're just running from one side to the other. And I think when we make a decision, we need to stick with it at least for a week. And having said that, when, when this commission makes a decision, it's the job of the county manager as the chief executive officer to execute that decision and carry out to its, to its fruition. If she wouldn't have answered that, with, with the other two counties answering, I just think it was only appropriate that, that she answer, uh, the letter. Just go ahead.
You know, I can only speak for myself. At first when I, when we got the letter, I'm thinking it was on a weekend, I'm not sure, went over the email, I'm not sure, I looked at it, skimmed through it, I said, "Okay." Later, I'm assuming, later, I read the letter, what, how I interpreted the letter was that, you know, that the three county, or the county should submit a resident of their county.
Yeah.
And that's the way I interpreted it, so I'm feeling, well, we, we, um, you know, we did do that, we followed it, so I told you, well, maybe that letter is intended more to Katron and, and Socorro County. So I looked at that, and I said, "Well, it's more intended to that." I saw the letters that they had sent, and each letter, and I don't have one in front of me, has a statue in it. So I go in back, I looked at the statue, and I'm thinking, are we gonna violate law? What are the consequences if we do? So, you know, taking all that into consideration, and, and yes, that, you know, the thought did cross my mind, you know, what if the other counties do submit another name? What happens to Grant County? Do we lose that representation? But at the end, I went on, on, on what the, the letter had stated, and I thought we followed what, what the letter had stated, and, and I saw that, uh, the other letters and their citing statutes, so that was my decision, so I did call, uh, the county manager, and I, I noticed that those other letters, I don't know what the county managers' names on those counties had all signed it, so I just said, "Yeah, send them a letter, 'cause I don't wanna violate the law." That was my, my thing, so I, I hope that clears some...
Like I said, this helps a lot, I feel like we did things fine. I think it was some, my error, miscommunication, but it was only my error, and, uh, I'm glad that the process, the process worked, my concern was that the process hadn't worked, and it's only by asking you here in this open meeting that I could find out, so, thank you all very much.
Okay. We're back to resolutions, we're considering the Open Meetings Act Resolution, item U on the agenda, is that right? So we have two, uh, suggestions before us. I recommend that we, uh, go ahead and approve the Open Meetings Act Resolution, as we have, uh, we had a lot of discussion at the work, as we have previously, we had a lot of discussion at the work session. I think there's a lot of changes that the commission is considering making in our open meetings, but, um, uh, it's my understanding that, um, for Colonia's funding, they've already asked the question, "Have we approved our Open Meetings Act Resolution?" I think the Planning Director would like to go ahead and, I, I don't know what you, did you answer that question?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, yes. Um, the Colonia sent me another email yesterday for the application that we have in, I need to get them the Open Meetings Act for, uh, two thousand and nineteen resolution, and the other resolution that I have on there, which is the resolution allowing me to apply. So, uh...
With that...
I'm just recommending that we at least pass a resolution, um, that has the Open Meetings Act, so I can get the application finalized in a timely manner.
With that being said, I might have to pass the resolution as it was presented, if we wanna make changes, we could, to our meetings, we can do that during the course of the year, is that correct?
Please clarify which version, so, um, there's...
The original version, uh...
So we have an original version, which simply changes the date, and then the second version, which has HB listed out.
Right.
Which incorporates the, uh, changes, um, proposed by Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, because you both have presented.
Okay, very...
And neither one is complicated, there's one change, uh, the change is in paragraph seventeen, uh, and the version that's marked HB, uh, allows public input, it makes the default position, that public input will be permitted at work sessions and regular meetings, whereas the other one, uh, only allows public input at regular meetings. That's the only difference, it's not complicated.
Mr. Chairman?
I think it's important, um, for us to hear from the public at work sessions, because we are, the work session says it, uh, it's a... are, the work session says it, it's a work session, and so if we're going to be considering something in a regular session and people have input on those items, I would like to hear it ahead of the regular session so that I can consider what people have to say. So my preference would be to either, I guess this is a point of order, have you withdraw your motion and move that we approve HB?
I didn't make a motion, I just made a suggestion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had made a motion. Oh, well, then, that's my apologies. So, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution R 1901-HB.
Is there a second? We'll have discussion. Okay, now discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Salas.
On Mr. Brown's suggestion, what we want to do is open up public input in our work sessions, right?
Which would have been Tuesday's meeting where we had no public input, we would now have public input at that meeting.
The only thing that I would suggest is that we limit public input to the agenda. It's not like in our regular meeting here where public input can be on any issue that needs to be brought.
The work session, in the work session, public input would be limited to agenda items.
Is that possible? Because when we get the public to speak, can't they basically say whatever they want? No, you could let it sit there.
If you say it beforehand and you say that, you know, you can come and get input, just the same as you said, there's no public input at the work session. It's when you come in, it's when you let some, one person say one thing, and you won't let another person say another thing, that's when you get into trouble. So, yes, you could limit the public input at the work sessions just to agenda items.
So that Mr. Salas finishes.
No, that was it because the work session is that.
I don't need to do that.
And I think I agree with that because, you know, we need to do, we do have to have public input on some of these items that we have, and I agree with limiting it to the items on the agenda.
I would just say that our meeting was extraordinarily long on Tuesday already. And so let me read what's currently in place for the, that's read by the chair at the work session. Says, "The general purpose of the county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting", which is two days later usually, "and for department heads and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regard to the matters in their respective departments." I think having public comment, the public's welcome to attend the work session, then they have basically two days to think about and do their homework before they come comment at a regular meeting. I think inviting public comment at the work session is going to get more informed. Public comment is going to lengthen out the meeting. I just would like to leave the resolution as it is, but I understand that may not be the will of the commission.
So can we, like, we have a five-minute time limit on what we have current on some of these issues, can we keep a time limit also and just specific to the items on the agenda? Because I think public input's very helpful.
Yes, I think that's what is worse, people are saying five minutes. The only limitation would be, additional limitation would be limiting it to the agenda items.
And we would do that in the same format that Chairman Billings just read. In the announcement of the work session and its purpose, we don't have to change the Open Meetings Act resolution to do that.
The only other item I have to add is, as we attended workshops on the Open Meetings Act, they became apparent to me that most of the counties, and I followed up with more after that meeting, have a three-minute limit on public comment. Several of them thought that five minutes would be excessive. If, just as a matter of discussion before, we make a motion to add to amend Commissioner Edwards' motion, would it be the will of this commission to limit public input at both the work session and the regular meeting to three minutes?
I would not be in favor of doing that.
You know, I like to give a minute. I mean, I can live with a five minute, so.
Just that's a small piece of our job. It doesn't really end up taking that long.
Should I make that motion?
Well, I don't have enough experience to know whether that's initial or not. I'll be honest. Maybe next year or in a few meetings, I'll say, well, we should have just kept it to three minutes, but right now it doesn't affect me one word yet.
Okay, the only thing, Manager Webb wants to speak, the only thing, other thing I have to say is, at Tuesday's meeting, it was frustrating for me to sit here and watch the sheriff, the pastor, all of them, like, the officials were here, the county staff, tying up that time. I was just like, Earl, don't you have some roads to fix? And actually, I think Earl was, I don't know what Earl was thinking. I don't know what all of them were thinking, but I don't know if any of them were thinking this, but it just looked like, get this meeting on the road, and I just don't want to add more public comment to that meeting. Manager Webb.
That's what I wanted to see if you would allow me to do, is move the county reports up to the first item on the work session agenda so that they can get back to being productive rather than sending her for hours. If you add, I mean, there has been times our public comment has surpassed an hour to an hour and a half. If you would not be opposed to me rearranging the agenda on the work session to allow them to speak first.
Would that be?
Well, I think this can fit well into this other idea that we're not dealing with today of rescheduling for there are evening or afternoon meetings. So I think in both cases, we need to do something to make sure that those folks don't have to sit there for hours. Because I'm the one who made the comment that Earl waited three hours to say about 30 seconds of report. It was clearly not an efficient use of time.
I like that idea, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor, any more discussion? All in favor of Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair, we need to talk about the language that you would actually like. You're going to put a limitation on the public input for the work session?
Yes. We already do it in?
I'm sorry.
Can't we do that in a statement that the chair reads? I just must be limited to the agenda.
Okay. Just to.
That doesn't need to be in our.
I just want to make sure it's what you want when we actually.
That doesn't need to be in this motion, the to approve the Open Meetings Resolution?
I think so, yes. If you're making.
This is what we're doing. So, Mr. Chair, I will amend my motion and add the language, public comment will be limited to agenda items only.
So can I offer a small suggestion? If we put a comma after work sessions and say, limited to agenda items only, comma, and regular meetings, blah, 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 I think that does the trick concisely.
Is that understood?
Sure. So it's, public input will generally be permitted at the beginning of work sessions, comma, limited to agenda items only, comma, and at regular meetings. Does that work for you?
Is that fair enough for you?
Yes.
No, I mean, the language is.
I don't have it in front of me like I used to. I think that makes sense. Is it making sense? Okay, that sounds good.
When someone's reading that a year or two from now, are they going to know what I'm telling them?
I just wanted to make sure it's what you intended. I think that's it.
Yeah, it is good.
Okay, very good. Motion to approve. I'm sorry. All in favor? All right, motion carried. I'm trying to figure out where we are. Oh, item B, consideration of resolution to appoint representative and alternate to the Southwestern County Commission Alliance. I move that I be allowed to be the representative on the Southwest County Commission Alliance and that Mr. Ponce, is that what we talked about, excuse me, be the alternate?
I think so.
Okay, I'll make that motion then.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item W, consideration of resolution to appoint Grant County Water Commission member.
Mr. Chair, we appoint Commissioner Salas as chair of the Grant County Water Commission. It's a main focus. He's indeed a project that's mainly in this district. It affects all of us, but if he's willing to take on that job, it's a big one. I'm happy to support him.
Is, are you willing to take that? Okay.
Yes. You can always say alternate on the items. You need to name an alternate pretty solid.
Okay. I would move to amend Commissioner Brown's motion to include Commissioner Ponce as the alternate on that committee. Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of appointment Southwest Solid Waste Authority members, would you go through that with us again?
So we had Commissioner Caston and myself as voting members. Alternates were Randy Via and Misha Ladish. So the only current vacancy is Commissioner Caston, but if you want to replace the rest of us, that's up to you.
We talked about on Tuesday, my memory is, please correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Edwards serving in that, did we?
We did.
Do you wish to continue that? Because you feel that I talked about.
I'm willing to spend that time. I have so interest in this authority mainly because of what I perceive as a need for composting services and a chance for the county to make some money. I'm happy for you if you like.
That means that I recommend nominate that Manager Webb and Commissioner Brown serve on that committee with alternates remaining, Mr. Lars and Mr. Via. Is there a second?
Right, Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Appointment of the New Mexico CAP entity member, as expressed on that Tuesday's meeting, I'd like to represent the CAP entity and put that into motion form with Mr. Salas as my recollection as the alternate. Is that still what we want to do?
I'll just tell them.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Consider resolution to appoint the New Mexico County Insurance Authority pool board. Manager Webb is on that, and I think the recommendation was Mr. Ponce, and that's an alternate, not a co-member. Okay.
And he's also going to need the recommendation for the Workforce Investment Act. Are you willing to do that?
I'm willing to do the, the one you just mentioned, the Work and Fortune Investment. So, so what you guys want to do with this one?
Okay, tell us.
So which one do you want?
I'm interested in the Workforce Investment Act. So if you guys would like.
Are you interested in doing both of them or?
That would be fine also.
I'd like to make sure that would be fine with you.
Is there, okay.
I would just say I'd be willing to be as insurance authority pool board if you feel like you're taking too much on, but it's not, that's really fine as well.
But that would be fine with me if you did the New Mexico Insurance Authority.
Otherwise, I'm not going to be on any committees, not that I have to.
Well, you're on a two-cost advisory. So item Z, is there a motion on the floor to recommend Manager Webb? I'm sorry, this is the New Mexico County Insurance Authority Pool Board, Manager Webb and Commissioner Edwards.
We not only recommend them, but we need them as our, as our members.
Okay, very good. All, says our second. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And item AA, I think we talked about to the elected officials for Workforce Investment Act, Commissioner Salas and Commissioner Ponce as an alternate. Is that what we want to do?
I think that was the other way around.
It's the other way around.
Okay, thank you. And does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion with great thanks.
That must be a bad one.
It's not a bad one, I just couldn't vote in a fight.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion carried. Item BB, is there a motion to accept Resolution R 1909 authorizing the execution and delivery of a local government plan and grant agreement binding between the New Mexico Finance Authority and Grant County in the amount of $37,500 for the purpose of financing the asset management plan?
So.
I'll second that. All in, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion carries. The bond question, Manager Webb?
Mr. Chair, I would like to turn the floor over to our bond counsel, and we also have our financial advisor here to bring us.
Good morning, Ian Sard, your lawyer.
No, no worries. I think I turned it off. There it is. Good morning, members of the commission. Luis Crossco with the Rhodey Law Firm, your campus bond counsel. Also with us today is my law partner, David Buchholz from the Rhodey Law Firm, sitting in the back, who's also available to answer any questions that may come up, and your financial advisor, Lawley Dean, standing behind me. So before you, you have a draft of Resolution R 1910, and as we discussed on Tuesday, it's a very straightforward and simple resolution authorizing us as your bond counsel to publish notice in the newspaper of your intent to consider an ordinance at next month's meeting authorizing the issuance and sale of your general obligation bonds that were approved by the voters on the November 6 election of 2018. I'll just briefly walk through that resolution with you. The whereas provisions, just give some background on the proceedings and the results of the election. Section 1 simply ratifies all actions consistent with this resolution that have been previously taken by the commission officers, employees, and then agents of the county. Section 2 just instructs that the bond ordinance will be considered at your February 21 meeting. Section 3 is the instruction to publish notice of intent to consider the bond ordinance at that meeting. And section 4 is just, there are only section, three sections. So a couple of points, housekeeping points that I wanted to bring up with terms of this resolution, simple one. I misspelled county on the title page, so I'll add a T with your permission. Also, on the form of the notice, I listed it as ordinance number R 1910. That's actually this resolution's number, so I'll substitute the ordinance number, which Ms. Coleman informs me should be 0-1902. So with the commission's permission, I'll also make that adjustment. More substantively, you'll note that there is a bracketed item in the title of the ordinance there, and we discussed this a bit on Tuesday, about whether the commission wishes to exercise the authority granted to it in 2017 amendment to the supplemental Publica Securities Act about whether to delegate authority to one or more persons to make determinations on the final terms of the bond ordinance rather than reserving that authority to yourselves. Along with that, should you choose to make the decision to delegate the authority, we'll of course provide provisions in the ordinance giving parameters and instructions to your name to designate. And I'll follow up work, but this is sort of a request for instruction from you as to how do you wish to proceed? Do you want, do you wish to exercise that authority? This will be an important consideration for us in drafting the ordinance because, as I said, we'll need to include those provisions addressing the delegated authority authorization. I think in speaking with Ms. Webb and Ms. Deany, that their recommendations are to go forward with use of the delegation authority. I've looked at the circumstances of this issue and the plan and the logistical calendaring issues, and I think it makes a lot of sense in this instance, so I don't think there's really any negative aspect to exercising your delegated authority.
I think we talked about that at Tuesday's meeting when we were in Raymond.
Okay. So then with your permission, we'll keep that bracketed language in the publication, and I'll draft your bond ordinance with those considerations in mind and utilizing the delegation authority. And then after speaking with Ms. Deany, I understand that her recommendation, and she's welcome to. to come up with me, I think she's going to address you also, is that this is going to be, rather than a negotiated sale, a sale that will be offered publicly. So in light of that, I would also propose adding a clause in the title, just stating that your, the ordinance is also approving the notice of sale, disclosure, and other documents relating to the bonds to make sure that we meet those requirements. And then lastly, you'll note that there's a, on the last page, a bracketed paragraph with, that has your standard accessibility language that comes along with meeting notices. And I just bracketed that because I wanted to make sure that it was consistent with whatever's in your open reuse resolution that you, that you adopted just this morning. So having that have been acted on, I can confirm that that's what, what's required to, the language that's required to be in your meeting notices. So with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions?
No, but I, I do want to defer to, who should be our expert, you know, Mr. Vandares. Is there any questions that you think we should be aware of?
All the questions I've had, Lale has answered very well and.
Okay. Thank you, Luis. Good morning. It's my pleasure to be in front of this board again this morning. For those of you who are new to this commission, my name is Lale Dany. I'm with Hilltop Securities, and it's our pleasure to serve the county as financial advisor. And I know we've had a lot of discussions about the geo-bond election and issuance over the course of the past year, so I'm not going to, you know, beat that to death again. I really want to just talk about a few elements of the mechanics pertaining specifically to this bond sale and which relate specifically to the documents that are in front of you for consideration today. So the first page of the presentation that you have in front of you is just an outline of the key dates in the timeline for this issuance, and this timeline contemplates delegated authority. So if you'll notice, the first kind of important item there is to establish the bond sizing and maturities, and what we expect to have that done by the early, you know, first week of February for inclusion in the POS, or preliminary official statement, which Rhodey is in the process of preparing with input from us and the county. And then late in that second or early in that third week of February, we expect to have ratings calls. We're in the process of determining what rating agency will be most favorable to use, and we will come back and report to the commission in the February meeting regarding the outcome of those discussions. And, and then you can see that we're planning for pricing and, pricing and sale of the bonds on March 18th. So just a couple of items to go over. First of all, I just want to talk a little bit about delegated authority. I know you've had some conversation about this on Tuesday at your work session, so I won't go into too much depth about it. And then I want to talk about the method of sale that we're recommending, and then I'll talk a little bit about credit ratings, and maybe just a little bit about the markets. So with regard, with regards to delegated authority, just briefly, you know, this, it might be helpful to talk about this just because it's new to New Mexico, fairly new to New Mexico and completely new to this commission. So the law changed in 2017 to bring New Mexico in line with, you know, what we see kind of standard in, in US municipal bonds around the country. And what this does is just allows you to delegate authority to accept the final pricing to staff members. So this commission essentially does not have to meet on this, the sale date does not have to coincide with the meeting of this, of this governing body. What it does not do is give carte blanche to staff or delegates to determine the size, the structuring, the terms, et cetera, of the bond issue. It just gives the authority to accept that final pricing that's given by the market on the day that we go to sale. And so the benefits of this are just that it allows for us to time the market a little bit better, so we don't necessarily have to coordinate with this public body in order to take that issue to market. So when we're getting closer to the issuance date, we can have a little bit more flexibility in determining, okay, what are the market conditions that are facing us at that time? Is it favorable to go this date, or do we need to move it a week, et cetera? So it just allows you to get the best pricing possible with regards to issuance timing. It also is just, you know, allows for better efficiency, and it's just more of a streamlined process. So the bottom line is, it just, it's in the county's benefit to utilize its delegated authority because it helps us to, to ensure that we're getting you the best possible pricing for your bonds on the date that you go to issue. So we are recommending that you utilize delegated authority, and I know bond counsel has spoken to this as well, so I'm here to answer any questions about that, if you have any. I'll pause for a moment.
Questions? Questions, anyone? Thank you, you've been very thorough in your explanation.
Sure, and I think Mr. Carrasco has had a comment about that as well.
Yeah, just one item I wanted to call your attention. So where we've seen issuers utilize delegated authority, the typical method is to appoint the chief executive of the agency, in this instance, probably the county manager. So unless there's any objection, I will draft the ordinance along those lines with access to any further instruction. David might want to comment?
No, actually, I just wanted to make some personal comments. I visited with some of you on the telephone over the last number of months, and I was coming home from Phoenix and thought it would be a good idea to come in person and say hello, because telephone's sort of impersonal. I also want to speak to Mr. Carrasco for a bit. Native of Silver City, native of Grand County, graduated from Cobra High School. Last night, we made him a partner in all offer. Very proud of him. And he's doing a great job for us. It's great for your county to have good young people come and do this kind of work in the state. The gray hairs are still watching, but during good hands here. Lale also is doing a great job for you, and I'm really pleased to just be here today, say hello, and to watch the proceedings. And of course, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks.
Thank you for that, man. Congratulations. And so, go ahead.
The question is, do you need authority to sell those bonds when you're going to optimize the market?
That's correct. It allows us to time the market in your benefit. So all of the specifics of the structure and the terms of the bonds are going to be predetermined through the parameters resolution authorizing ordinances acted on and approved by this public body in a public meeting. So anything from issuance size to term limits, even the range of acceptable interest rates, all of that is determined through parameter ordinance or resolution by you guys upfront. The delegated authority just allows us to time the market a little bit better so that you don't have to meet, or we don't have to schedule the bond sales, you know, to coincide with the meeting of this public body. So you're just accepting the terms that the market yields, or the pricing that the market yields on the day that we go to sale.
Okay, I'm good.
All right. So if there aren't any other questions about delegated authority, I'll just speak a little bit about sale type or sale method. So moving to pages four, five, and six of your presentation, basically, so there's, there's a couple of ways that you could take a, sell a bond issue. The top two on page four are competitive and negotiated sales, and these are public offerings. The bottom is a private placement, and I'll talk about that briefly first, but that's really not going to apply here. So private placement is when you elect to sell your bonds directly to a private investor or group of investors. So either a regional or local bank, sometimes national banks play in that sector, high net worth individuals, that sort of thing. You know, sometimes if a, if a bond issue is a little bit more complex in the structuring, and you know you want to, you know, you know you have interest from a certain group, from a certain investor or group of investors, that can be favorable. But with, with a general obligation bond, the market understands these very well, the market handles these very efficiently. They're probably the most secure form of public debt because they're backed by ad below on property taxes. So the way the debt levy is set, we, we've struck, we will structure this bond to keep the debt levy as it is currently so that the voters and the tax base aren't phasing, aren't facing like, you know, fluctuating rates in their property taxes. But essentially, if there were to be dramatic contraction of the tax base, theoretically the tax, the debt levy could be raised as high as necessary in order to meet the annual debt service on those bonds. So the investors are protected no matter what, and so the market has a large interest in this. So we feel it's favorable to go for a public sale. And between a public, so a public sale can be done through a negotiated offering or competitive offering. And the next page, page five, kind of just outlines the pros and cons of each, and what might, what types of issues might be suited to each type of sale. So a negotiated sale is where the county would select an underwriter or a group of underwriters to market that issue on its behalf upfront, and then those underwriters would work on your behalf to market the bonds, to line up investor interest, and then take it to market. The competitive sale is where you just, you know, we post the terms, the offering date, all the documents, the official statement, preliminary official statement, all of that is posted upfront, and then on the day of the pricing or sale, the market, it's opened up to the entire market, and all the underwriters and investors come, bid for it on a, on the selected electronic platform. And so there, the situation where a negotiated sale might be preferable is if there's something, again, unique or complex about the credit, something that needs to be explained away. If the county, for example, had perceived a qualified opinion on its audit, if there were some negative, you know, components in the tax base, if we had seen large fluctuations, if this was a revenue issue with some complex structuring, that sort of thing. But again, as I mentioned before, geo-bonds are very sort of vanilla. The market understands these really well, and we feel that, you know, just in terms of cost, the most cost-effective method is going to be a competitive sale. It's also the most transparent method because you're not making any commitments to underwriters upfront, so that's really what we're recommending at this point. A negotiated sale carries, can carry slightly higher cost when we're looking at something as, as straightforward as a general obligation bond. So if anybody has any questions about the specifics of that structuring, I'm happy to answer them. You know, the market is conducive to a competitive sale right now with a lot of the sell-offs that we've seen over the last quarter or so in the equity markets. We've seen a risk-off approach for, among investors, and a flight to quality, which has kind of driven bond yields down. So we're seeing a lot of investor interest. We've had negative bond fund outflows for a substantial part of 2018, which kind of reversed itself going from December into January. So again, we're seeing a lot of positive interest in the investor base that invests in municipal bonds. So again, it's a, it's a good time to, to take this as a competitive sale. So if anybody has any questions on that.
You went to such effort to explain why competitive process is going to be better. I'm so convinced that it is. Did I, is this not what we have done in the past? In the past, did we negotiate a sale?
I think you may have done a negotiated sale for your, for your past GRT bond. I'm not sure how your past geo-bond, are you, do you know how the last geo-bond was taken in 2014? Competitive? Okay, yeah, so the last geo-bond.
So all that goes to change our process. It was just telling us.
No, it's just in the, in the interest of informing you guys on what you're being asked to consider here today, and our kind of thought process in how we determined our, our recommendation. We've been seeing a lot of negotiated sales go to the market in 2018, and we've been recommending negotiated a lot just because of market volatility. So, but with some of the reversal of that with regards to interest in municipal markets, we're, we're firmly recommending a competitive sale in this case.
There's a little bit of history on that, if you like. Up until, say, the financial crisis times, the role that Lale is playing today, which is a financial advisor with a fiduciary responsibility to you at the board, didn't really exist. And most of the water that was carried by the underwriting community, who worked, looked into the same goal as you, but didn't have a fiduciary relationship. So when that was the case, you often saw negotiated transactions. Now that you have an expert whose loyalty runs to you, it's easier to just go into the market with a public sale on the computer and get the best bid, because you don't need the advice that those people would otherwise give you, you get that advice. So that's sort of the history that's involved in some of that.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. So if there weren't any more questions about sale type, I'll move to credit ratings and just discuss that briefly. As you noted on your calendar, we're targeting that second week, late that second week, early that third week of February for ratings calls. We're in discussion with rating agencies to determine what might be the most favorable path to go to. The current geo-bond that's outstanding, the 2014 bonds, were rated by Moody's at that time. We did see them reaffirm their bond rating when they did their annual review in August, September. So what the, the county currently falls in an A2 rating, so we'll be at that or better. We definitely don't anticipate any sort of downgrade. The, the state of New Mexico has been treated, you know, has not fared well over the past couple of years with changes to how pension liabilities are required to be booked on financials. So basically, for those who are not familiar, the state kind of offloaded the pension liability from its balance sheet onto the balance sheets of local governments. So it's really impacted the bottom line or net position of local governments, and we've taken a huge hit in terms of, in terms of credit ratings. We expect that to be already figured in to the, to the county's current rating. We hope to do a little bit better, but I can speak to that a little bit more once we know more at the February meeting. And obviously, this is going to have a, you know, pretty substantial impact on credit rates that are available, which is why I like to cover credit ratings. So just a, a little bit of an idea of what the rating agencies look at with regards to geo-bonds. The diagram on page eight kind of gives you an idea of how that breaks down, and I've listed Moody's and S&amp;P's criteria here. Fitch is another credit rating agency that also rates these types of bonds, and it's very similar. And you can see that a large portion of this is out of the control of the county. So things like the economy or tax base, there's really not a lot you can do about that. They're really going to dig into what's the local economy look like, what, what, what are the tax revenues doing, what's the split between residential and non-residential? Then finances is kind of where the county has some control, and we expect to weigh positively. The county has excellent financial controls. Audits have been really favorable. I haven't seen the, current audit has not yet been released by the state auditor, but increases in cash reserves are always looked upon favorably. Management structures are something that the county has control over, that's very favorable. And again, debt and pensions are something that you can't control over. And then on the, debt you have no control over. And then on the S&amp;P side, again, economy, that 30% institutional framework, which basically means the legislative framework that the state operates under with regards to municipal bond issuances. Again, you have no control over that. That's determined at a statutory or state level. And then, you know, management, financial measures, those are really the only things that you have control over and should reflect very favorably on this issue. And then for anybody who's interested in getting into the nitty-gritty, I've listed kind of a detail of the scoring, scorecards and methodology on that next page, on page nine, just so that you can see, like, you know, in depth, what are they looking at in terms of fund balances, trending, revenues, net position, all of that stuff, so you can look at that at your leisure. And we'll speak to this again a little bit more in February after we have some discussions with the rating agencies. And so with that, I'll kind of halt there. You know, the, just, I'll give you just a couple of words on the market. Like I mentioned, you know, with the sell-offs in equities towards the end of 2019, we saw a lot of investors flock from equities into more risk-free types, or less, less risky types of holdings, such as municipal holdings. And so this has driven bond yields down quite a bit. So if you look back on some of the trending and the rising of interest rates starting in, you know, 2016, we saw a substantial and marked upward trend in interest rates. So from, you know, late 2016 until mid to late 2018, interest rates rose a good 250 basis points, or about two and a half percent, which is really substantial coming off the historic lows that we were, we were seeing for a good few years there. But some of that volatility in the equity markets in the final quarter really had a positive impact on this and erased about 50 basis points, or half a percent off that rise. So even though, you know, with the shutdown, there's a little bit of risk aversion to anything government-related, so we saw, you know, just kind of a little bit of rising back up of interest rates, nothing substantial. We are seeing just a very favorable time to take your bonds to market right now. So if anybody has any questions about what the market's doing or anything like that, I'll be happy to answer it.
Questions? So you said there's been an adjustment back down about 50 basis points?
That's correct.
How come my loan didn't go back down with my variable?
Well, mortgages are a little bit of a different story.
It went up exactly as you described, two and a half basis points, but there was no damage, so I'm going to do that.
Yeah, well, that's, mortgages are a little bit different because they tend to be a little bit more risky than government papers, so they don't follow quite the same rules. You get the rises in line with the municipal markets, but you don't get the downward trend as much, or maybe a little bit delayed, so we'll see how that plays out.
Other questions?
What do you estimate, you know, interest rate for ours?
So when I first, when I came to this commission back in the summertime, I think we were projecting that we'd be between four and four and a quarter going into this first, first quarter issuance. But now with the downward trend in interest rates, we're looking at somewhere in the But now with the downward trend in interest rates, we're looking at somewhere in the three and three quarters range. And again, at the February meeting, we'll be a little bit closer to the sale date, so I'll be able to come back to you with some much better projections, pinpointing where we expect the issue to place in the market at that time. But that's kind of what we're projecting right now.
For you to ask me, my agreement, what's the life of this issue?
We're targeting, so the maximum term that's allowable under statute for geo bonds is 20 years. We're expecting it not to go out longer than 15.
Didn't we specify that in the resolution?
I don't know if that's included in the resolution. I think, I think you'll be approving that in the February meeting when you look at the final form of the POS.
So we talked about it, but we alluded that that is actually lined up in the ordinance and not from you determined. So it's really going to play into the market.
Right. And so some of the discussion that we had earlier, or last year, the last time we spoke about this was, you know, an interest in holding the jet out longer because that's where the market is favorable. We're not seeing much of a difference between short term and long term rates. You know, the yield curve hasn't steepened very much, so we're still kind of looking at that. But with the, so the county was over collecting on its debt levy for the past couple of years and that's partly because, you know, we didn't want to see any fluctuation in the debt levy so that when voters were voting on this, they weren't like seeing a downward drop and then, you know, and then an upward rise, all of that. So we have a balance in the debt fund of about $2 million that we'll use to upsize the first two maturities on this bond, which will allow us to shorten the term so we won't need to hold it out that full 20. We'll, we'll probably take it out a max of 14 or 15 years. So that's kind of what we're looking at right now. And then the annual debt service thereafter will be sized to maintain the current debt levy as is. So the tax base isn't going to be facing any volatility in terms of their tax bill.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve resolution R 1910, directing publication of notice of New Mexico, sorry, notice of meeting and intend to adopt bond ordinance in connection with Grant County New Mexico General Obligation Bond Series 2019?
Delegated authority?
Thank you.
So someone with that insertion?
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Item, is this DZ or DN? Sorry?
DZ.
Okay. Because on one agenda it's DN. So this is, accept the motion to approve resolution R 1911, authorizing the county to submit an application to participate in the local DWI grant.
Mr. Chair? We approve resolution R 1911.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion to approve R 1912, supporting the County and Tyrone Health Council Act.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve resolution number R 19-12.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Consideration of Resolution R 1913, supporting reform of the low income property tax rebate. And will we explain that just briefly?
So basically, what the language in the draft bill, and you can look it up, it's Senate Bill 116. There's some grammatical changes in there, but the nuts and bolts of it is it changes the language that counties shall consider this ordinance every odd numbered year in January. So counties may consider this ordinance every odd numbered year in January. So it gives you the option to consider it and it doesn't make it a requirement.
Chair, I move we approve resolution R 1913.
Any discussion?
That's with the may.
Right. So it's changing it currently as the shall and it changes it to may.
Any commissioner can put an item on the agenda so at any time we could.
No, no, he's talking about the language in the bill. It's changing the language in the statute from.
Yes, that is on debate.
It's making it not a requirement type statute.
And so if the, if the bill is passed and becomes law, then this commission could still consider it at any time. It'd be easy because any commissioner can put an item on the agenda and we could consider it.
Chairman, I have asked for clarification on CC. Does it support both the act and the funding bill?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that's been moved and seconded, right?
Yes.
On item, oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Consideration of Resolution R 1914, a resolution to apply the funding from the Colonius Board for the Tyrone ADA Compliance Project.
I move that we approve resolution number R 19-14.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Consideration of Resolution R 1915, resolution of Grant County ratifying a certain agreement between Grant County and the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, basically authorizing the proper official from Grant County, I move that, that continue to be, Misha Larsen can continue to represent us on the COG entity and we need an alternate, two alternates.
I'm happy to serve as an alternate if that's useful.
And I'll add that to my motion, Commissioner Brown.
I'm happy to serve as an alternate.
And Commissioner Edwards. Is, so is there a second?
A second.
Is that what, is there any discussion? Is that what we're going to do? Okay. All in favor?
I'm sorry. My apologies. So what we're doing is we're, so Misha is currently the alternate, correct? And we are making him the, what's the difference? What's the opposite of the alternate? Designated representative with Commissioner Brown and myself as alternates.
Thank you for that clarification. My motion was misstated. I think I thought of Misha as the designated because.
Because he was acting like.
Because he was.
We'll make it official.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we're ready to reset.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we recess with the Grant County Board. Commissioner needs Grant County health.
Is there a second? All right. All in favor? Aye. Call to order the Grant County Health Claims Care Board for consideration of December 2018 health plan claims in the amount of $5,376.28.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve health plan claims in the amount of $5,376.28 with the note that that's a nice little number.
I was going to say that. I'll second that and I'll second the nice little number. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn as the Grant County Health Care Claims Board and reconvene as the Grant County Board of Commissioners? Need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved, seconded?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Call to back the meeting of the Grant County Board of Commissioners. Will stand for elected official reports.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our communities and speak to you for a few minutes. Like to first say a few words about the Sheriff's Office, our current plans and visions for the future. I will then present some basic information on the activities of our staff since the first of the new year. Currently, we are in the process of conducting interviews and background investigations to fill multiple open positions. We intend to seek the most qualified and motivated applicants to serve our communities. Many of the current applicants are already certified New Mexico police officers with experience. Once recruited to join our team, we intend to provide the best available field training program so that these new deputies will be part of the Sheriff's Office family and choose to remain serving our communities throughout their careers. With that being said, my staff, with input from our deputies, members of the community and experience of law enforcement trainers, have developed guidelines for my administration in moving towards some very important goals. Transparency and accountability to those we serve. Service and professionalism, honor and integrity. Recruiting, training and retaining the best people. Reviewing and restructuring our agency to bring us to the peak effectiveness and efficiency. Seeking supplementary funding grants as appropriate. We intend to strengthen our bonds with county government and neighboring agencies where established and build new bridges where none exist now. Our revision for the future began more than a year ago when I established my committee to elect. Our work in the earnest began at one minute after midnight on January 1st. We are currently engaged in expanding our care program in our county schools. I remain 100% committed to this program. If we reach just one child, it will be all have been worth of the investment. We are completely changing our training philosophy to provide relevant and career retention opportunities, which includes development of quality instructional staff. We intend to provide advanced training to our command staff so they are fully capable of functioning in any division or operation of the Sheriff's Office. We hope to establish a mutually beneficial relationship with Western New Mexico University and Boulder Basic Police Academy and establishing professional and service training opportunities. I also hope to encourage our staff in their higher education goals, such as completing college degrees. In general, our activity for the period of January 1st through January 23rd is relatively consistent to the same period of 2018. For 106 categories tracked by our current database, some examples include, so for 2019 up to yesterday's date, domestic violence incidents, we have been dispatched to 10. And 2018 in January was six. Harassments, five. In 2018 in January, nine. Breaking and entries, so far this are three. Last year, zero. Suspicious activity, 12. And last year, nine. Motor vehicle accidents, or with or without injuries. This year, we've been dispatched to nine. Last year was 16. Deputies responded to 273 calls of service from external orientation, origination, so being dispatched for our Mar Dispatch Center. Deputies responded to or handled 781 initial self-initiated incidents for a total of 1,054 responses in both incorporated and unincorporated areas of Grant County. I'd like to kind of give you some stats of our civil division. So between the month of December and the month of January, in December, we had served nine domestic violence orders. In January, we're up to 10 as of yesterday's date. On the notices of, for the courts, our civil division in December served 36. Up to yesterday's date, we're at 65. On subpoenas that have been served in December, we're 141. Now, for, till yesterday's date, we're at 142. On summons of last year, or I'm sorry, of December, was 77. And we're now at 55. On writs, in December, one was served. And now up till yesterday, four have been served for the month of January. In December, our civil division on transports outside of Grant County, sending either defendants to either rehab or to a penitentiary, 2,982 miles were incurred in our civil units. As of yesterday in January, for the month of January, 3,256 miles have been put in our unit. One of the things I like to read is, we're not just about serving, arresting or answering our things. We go, I want to show you some of our things that we have. There's compassion in our department and not just for investigations and stuff, but there was an incident that happened right before Christmas and I kind of want to read this. What happened was that there was a dog that got lost in Turkey Creek. An elderly couple from Silver City had misplaced his dog and I just kind of want to read this and see, so you guys can hear kind of this. Yesterday, I was at Tammy's Cafe in Cliff eating lunch with my ride along, a new 911 dispatcher. A man approached us and stated that he and his friend had been camping on the Gila River near Cliff. The previous night, a cold lost old dog wandered into their camp. The dog was very friendly and stayed. The man asked for help in trying to find the dog's owners. As the dog had a freight collar with tags, I contacted the High Desert Humane Society, who was provided by Ruby with owner information. I called the telephone number and spoke with an elderly woman, who seemed choked with emotions when I asked if she had a dog named Bruno, to which she answered yes, but he disappeared from our home about three weeks ago. I have given up all hope of seeing him again. She was elated when I told her Bruno was found safe and a bit warm and skinny and brought to me. Ninety minutes later, we reunited Bruno with his family in Silver City. The woman informed us that this was truly a Christmas miracle and offered us a reward of $100. As we could not accept this, I suggested the money be donated to the High Desert Humane Society in either her or Bruno's name. She asked her husband immediately, and they both immediately agreed. As we left a very modest residence, we saw the elderly woman hugging and talking to Bruno as she took him into the house. Just some of the things that the guys go beyond the scope of just investigations, but the community policing is something that we do quite a bit of. One of the other things that I just wanted to share is, between us and the media, there's been a lot more transparency and you are going to be seeing a lot more news releases on our critical incidents that we're handling at the Sheriff's Office. Before I ask for any questions or anything, I'd just like to introduce you, for the ones that don't know, this is my undersheriff, Captain Jess Watkins, who's in the rear of the audit. Any question?
Thank you. How many new officers are, do you have or do you need?
Currently, right now, we're in hiring of five deputies total with our department. We have two that are still on, on the books for retirement, which will give us two more. So total of seven, but right now we're looking at five.
Okay, so that means a great need for in-service training, right? To make sure that what you do is, is building legal.
Most definitely.
So I'm just wondering how you're going to handle the need for more in-service? As somebody who used to do a lot of in-service, you know, it's time and money. You know, you either steal time from patrols or else you pay overtime and you either ask for somebody to come in, you know, as a freebie or you perform the in-service yourself. And sometimes the need is for an expert in the field that you're going to, that you're doing the in-service. So, as a budget's are always tight, so how are you handling the need for the extra right now?
So, currently right now in our patrol, we're pretty much running three to four. We actually have three deputies that are either on returning to leave or sick leave, so 10 deputies is what we're short. And we're seeing a lot of overtime on doubling up on different, from civil divisions to helping our court security or patrol or investigations. As far as with one of these new hires, our process has changed completely and it's really well. One of the things that we do have is field training officers already that are certified as field training officers. We've completed some books of what the process has to be done step by step. So once we do receive a deputy, a new deputy hired into our, to the office, there are certain steps where they go into the criminal investigation division, they go to the, our civil division to see the difference between civil and criminal laws. They go out to our residential to see what Memphis and the Memphis area is, the Gila Cliff area is. And then they're going with, they're assigned to a patrol field training officer, where they go step by step, day by day on observations, going from state statutes to our policies and so forth and so on with that. And between the field training officer, the sergeant of that shift and the patrol lieutenant, they continue to monitor this for a nine week program until they're, they're signed off, that they have to release something to be on their own.
I also imagine you sometimes have the need to call them in as a boot, to give them updates on different aspects of the job, right?
Yes, sir.
So, when you guys are performing, what do you call it, the civil duties, they shouldn't summon students and things of that nature? How much of that is county business versus, you know, your delivery paper for, for some other, you know, a lawyer, anything else like that?
It's, it's, there's a lot of everything involved, from private organizations, businesses, our courts, the detention center where they are, inmates have to be transported to either Manchester Court Divisions one or two, plus whatever's going into the state. One of the things on legislation last year, or I'm sorry, last week, that myself and the captain were up there was, there is by statute, there was no money in legislation where if a district judge has sentenced inmate to a state penitentiary, that the county's supposed to be, repay back the monies or the transportation. to be, repay back the monies or the transportations and stuff like that. So, they're pushing this year for legislation to see, that line item is zero. But they're pushing this year and hopefully that it does pass, where we will get reimbursed, or the state themselves will come from corrections to duty transports. So, it alleviates saving our units and maintenance, the time, the overtime and everything on our divisions.
So, I'm curious to know, does this extra financial, does it come back to your department so that you can utilize it for, for example, the trade?
Presently, right now, the, what happens when our civil division, someone goes in there with a red or an eviction notice, whatever civil is, there's a charge of $42. Those $42 are put back into the general fund of the county and not into the sheriff's office.
Well, I'm just looking because I know that the budgets are probably going to be as tight as they've ever been, you know? So, I'm just trying to think of, you know, sources of funding those days, and I just was wondering about that, that source. Okay, we'll talk more.
Thank you.
Questions for the sheriff? Mostly a suggestion, you are an elected official, just like we are, but I guess my suggestion would be is, is public safety is dear to of Grant County. And I hope you keep the lines of communication open with our county manager there. But what I would like to see through our county manager, through you through a county manager, would be maybe some type of strategic plan. What you plan on, what you want to accomplish, or what goals you want to accomplish by the end of the, you know, by the end of either your term or whatever, or whatever you decide to do. So, we can look at ways to help you, because I think it's very important to Grant County and to our community that we look at that and for public safety. And like I said, it's a suggestion. And I would love to see something like that and what your thoughts are and what you're thinking and where you want to turn Grant County towards as far as public safety. That's it.
No, thank you. And I can tell you, with manager Webb, she's been great and she has helped me so much from before the transition of being elected and even now, she has been very supportive with some of the roles that we're doing and some of the changes that we are changing in the sheriff's office.
Sheriff, the one area that I've, there's been a lot of calls for me. As a commissioner, and part of the fact from that you ran on was narcotics division. Because I'm, I've heard a lot, and even experienced, you know, thefts and break-ins, where people had felt safe and secure in their, in their homes in different neighborhoods, that's gone. People are not answering doors and have 911 ready and, and then we, you know, the news is flooded with, you know, from Albuquerque to Luch and stuff like that. So, I know that one of the big issues that is coming to me is that about the crime that stems from, from the drug use. So, that was one of the things that I'm really interested in.
Well, one of the things that we're looking into as far as drug issues or anything, of course, we're going to restructure our patrol division, or most, the sheriff's office in general. Right now, because of the shortness that we have, there's not a lot of different things that I can actually in place, like narcotics, our narcotics detectives that I do want to get, which would be two. We're looking to do the first of hiring and getting to make sure that patrol, patrols are main bread and butter. They're the ones that are out there being dispatched and called. They're the ones that are being observed with what they're doing or not doing. And that's my first goal is to get them ready, to have the full staff and with the captain and talking with my administration and stuff, it's going to get restructured. We've also been in contact with HIDA, which myself and the captain do go to the HIDA meetings in Dammie. And they're helping us out as well, they're starting to set up for our narcotic detectives. So, as soon as we are in place and full staff at the sheriff's office, you know, definitely you're going to see some narcotic detectives. And one thing, and it was one of my things on my campaign, but we have a bad issue in Grant County with drugs. Most of our calls that are either involved in narcotics, a lot of the burglaries, a lot of larcenies are because someone's just trying to get the next fix and they're trying to get the monies to sell or whatever, the properties that they're stealing and stuff like that. I want to make it a point and I want people to know that the sheriff's department is going to be a very proactive and not reactive, and we're going to take care of business. And, you know, in the past, we've never had the narcotic detectives for quite some time. And if it wasn't patrol divisions doing the traffic stop and doing drug intervention, interdiction, I'm sorry, drugs aren't being worked in the county. Well, we're going to stop that and we're going to make a difference. And I want to put the fear of God on people that, that are doing this, that they're looking behind their back all the time because we're going to be there. Any questions?
Sheriff, thank you very much for that great report. And I just, I can't tell you how pleased I am to hear about the changes that you're making and the goals that you've set and all that sort of stuff. Thank you very much. Could you help me understand what the relationship is between the sheriff's department and the state patrol? And how, so, what I'm asking you is, it seems to me like the state patrol could be doing more on, or helping you more on the state roads, especially considering that you're short of deputies, that sort of thing. One of the things we used to hear all the time was how difficult it was for the sheriff's department to recruit deputies because the state patrol paid more, you know, that kind of thing. It's my understanding that the state patrol has a significant number of officers in Grant County. And so, I'd just like you to speak to a little bit about your relationship with the state patrol and how you can work with them to have your deputies be more available for things like narcotics and, you know, domestic violence, those kinds of things, as opposed to actual traffic stops on state highways.
Yes, ma'am. In the past, there was a time that New Mexico State Police had to log crashes. And here up till last year, the sheriff's office is handling all crashes and pretty much all criminal. And that was done then, and we're still doing that for now. One of the things that myself and the captain have been speaking in with the administration team, we do want to reach out with New Mexico State Police. I met with Lieutenant Terazas once. And trying to see if we can share that bold or where New Mexico State Police is actually handling crashes on state highways and where the sheriff's office would be handling it on county roads. One of the other things is, it's always been where the sheriff's office is primary on calls unless they're dispatched from Las Cruces for state police. So, we've always taken the initial calls. Most of the time, we have state police that will assist and go to a call and assist our deputies on them. But I think that transparency and the communications need to be better between our agency and theirs and come up with a game plan more than what it's been. And it's going to happen, like I said, I did meet with Lieutenant Terazas and we're just trying to set up some stuff of what we can do or not to do to make it better for both of us.
Great. Well, I appreciate your initiative on that. And I just, I think it's really important that, you know, the sheriffs, in my opinion, the sheriff should be handling more of the residential and that sort of thing, particularly when you're short. And part of the reason that you're short is because the state patrol is your competitor for good staff. So, thank you.
Any questions, Tom?
No further.
I just, I don't want to waste everyone's time, but I was looking as quickly as I can. A sheriff's deputy was dispatched at my request yesterday because I pulled what I thought was a dead baby deer off the road because I was afraid somebody's going to hit it. My wife was coming behind me, I thought she might hit it, she might be the one. So, as I pulled it off the road, it was anything but dead. And so, I asked the deputy to be dispatched. So, he came out and put the animal down out of its misery. And I just asked him, as we were standing there, what he thought about the new sheriff. And I expected some generic answer like, you know, just generic and not really one way or the other. He said, his response was, I would follow him anywhere. So, I just want you to know, you have at least some support from your troops. And he went on to say about how you've involved them and he feels a part of your department, for sure. And so, I welcome, I congratulate you on that. And I have understanding that you don't need my congratulations, you're your own elected official, but still, you're to be committed for that. And just want to let you know that.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Mr. Treiter?
Chairman, board members, elected officials, county manager, attorney, and audience. For starters, Frank's a pretty good co-host on the radio, so you got to hear him, he's very entertaining and he does very well on explaining what's going on. And his chief, I didn't recognize him because he doesn't have his hat on, on top of that. But on that note, I was very surprised that Sheriff Burns actually came in and wanted some information on renting some grants for their lapel cameras. And sitting on the big board, and not only that, other economic boards I sit on, he came in and asked me for information. I was very surprised that here's the sheriff asking me questions on valuation assessment instead taxes, and I was very impressed on that. So, anything I can help on, Frank, I'll be there for you. One other thing I would like to state that I am so glad to have my employees there in the county assessor's office. They are the shipmates and they keep my ship afloat and I really appreciate them. And first thing that I do is I always thank them and they do a fantastic job more than anything else. At this moment, I do have Adra Hernandez, she actually is going to be handling the 65-year and older applications. And now that we know that we're going to have to have an enormous campaign on trying to help out these seniors on the low-income side. So, Adra Hernandez will be the one handling all that. We do have the valuation freeze at this moment, and we do have the hit a household exemption. You just have to come in or call in as long as it's your primary residence and here in Grant County. We also have for you to acknowledge on your livestock, any livestock, it's a self-rendering state where you have to render all your cattle, livestock, and not only that, horses included. And also for if you need special method evaluation, you have to apply for that. We do have an individual that goes out there, make sure that you qualify for the special method evaluation. Our business personal property, we're increasing little by little on more businesses here in Grant County, and that gives me a good smile on my face because it helps out on bringing in more revenue for the county. And I can see the economic situation here in Grant County. Also, on your manufactured homes, you need to come in, you need to call. We don't send out the rendition forms any more on manufactured homes. You have to just call in saying that your manufactured home is still in Grant County. So, please call in. You have within January 1 until the end of February. Once after that, we get ready for sending out the notices of valuation. One important thing is also on the veteran exemptions. If you are a veteran, you can apply for the 4,000 off your taxable site or of the 100% disabled veteran, and that takes you completely off the tax rules. If you have more than five acres, it would consider your primary residence and five acres on top of that. We do have a couple of employees there at temp, and thanks for county manager on helping us. Jeremy Paul and Victoria Moni have done a sensational job. We're actually converting our Marshall Swift from our historical models, and there's over 3,000 of them, and they're really knocking them off one at a time. I do have, this is my second four-year term, I want to get some in the comments, and I hope that we can get a lot of that done because it's a big, big project. And also scanning all their documents, our property record cards, and I, once again, I do thank my staff. Sadly to say, I'm losing one of my employees. She actually is getting under contract under her GIS, does a lot of the contract for GIS on her own personal time. And I would like to say Desiree Lisca, she has done a fantastic job. She's going to move on, so I will have a position open there in the assessor's office. She actually runs my sales ratios analysis and does a lot of the field work, and I am going to miss her dearly. She's one of my family members in the assessor's office, and if you know anybody that's really good in numbers, statistics, please send them my way. We had a meeting, and I see Misha there in the background there. I want to thank Misha also. We had the kickoff meeting for the parcel correction project to redraw the subdivisions and the parcel fabric creation. I am so glad that we sat together yesterday. It was Tracy, Burnstead, Lorraine Zunic, myself, and Misha. After gathering the preliminary estimated, refining the details of the scope, additional primary estimated for the GIS services is currently on the state contract in the state of New Mexico, in addition to original state nationwide. We carefully consider to the pros and cons of different procurement methods and when the firms existing with the contracts with Bohamian Houston Incorporated in Albuquerque. We met the two individuals, were very open to helping us out so we can get this parcel fabric and creation done. The firm has chosen by being in-state and the size of the experience for the GIS team of the firm. The surveyors, professional, professional support and project, recommended to the one-in-one customer, and that's what I like so much, and continue to support after the project is done, that will be completed. Their ability to work closely with the county and provide customer solutions and the project challenge. The HBI held a kickoff meeting, once again, was yesterday. And thanks to New Mexico Taxation and Livy Department by Larry Brockman, he also wants projects to integrate with the state uncommon data modelization project, networking with other fabric parcels, project scheduling, and other community projects and county projects, and the data transfer. A special thanks to a gentleman by the name of Ray Castillo in the planning department for rescanning over 221 original subdivision plots, and Misha Lardis in clearing the personal project and was giving the invaluable insight into the procurement process for moving this project along. Thanks a lot, Misha. The redraw subdivision plots, exits parcels, integrates into the corrections areas in converting the parcel fabric, which adds the fluid fabric that conducts the update of the daily workflow for the GIS parcel mapper. This presents the issue to lead the current state and parcel as well, allowed to much easier, less cost and accuracy in improvement of the second state for the Remining County outside the city limits, outside the subdivisions. With that stage of the project, the most densely populated area in the municipality's right-of-way within the significant improvements, workflows, and accuracy of the assessor's ownership record will improve tremendously and markedly. Weekly Skype meetings, we will be having every Monday, possibly in the mornings, every Monday that we're going to be talking to on update. And it would be nice that the county would be on board on one of our, so we can be live on all the updates that are going on. So, once again, thanks a lot, Misha. Any questions on that? Because that was one of the issues that we wanted to do is correct all this parcel correction on it, and it's a pretty big project.
Questions for Mr. Treiter?
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I just got elected for the board of directors for the New Mexico Counties, and it's not the New Mexico County Association anymore. And I did attend my first meeting on January 15th at 2:00 PM, and there's a lot of issues that we can talk about, but I mean, I could be here all day, and I know Chris is getting hungry over there. But we do have presentations, actions, legislative items, we do have updates and reports, and we will be meeting again on February 15th, I mean, June 16th up in Santa Fe. At that time, they actually have come up with the meet the counties on the 15th up at the Roundhouse, and we did reserve a table for Grant County, and I'm very proud to represent Grant County more than anything else. So, if anybody would like to join me, it's from 12:30 to 2 o'clock at the Roundhouse for Grant County, so I did reserve a table at that time. Once again, I'm very happy that I can actually be there. I did sit on the board for the board of directors in the past, I was in the executive committee, and I am in the process of hopefully running for on the executive committee so we can, so I can actually represent not only Grant County, but other three counties that need representation. And I will keep everybody update, especially during the legislative session, with our New Mexico legislative reports. It's a lot of fun. I enjoyed doing this for many, many years I've done this. So, any questions? And I know our esteemed county manager does a lot of bill chasing, I see her name all over the place, and she keeps an eye on what's going on with these bills. And I would love to work closely with Charley more than anything else. The only thing I have on the executive calendar, we, as you can see about the territorial charter day, sadly to say, I'm not going to be there to be Juan Patron, but Al can step in to my shoes on that on the 16th of February. And as you can see, I'm growing a little hair on the face and I'm just about to go crazy, I feel like Spot the Dog. That's, and the reason why is I'm going to be one of the card dealers for the Texas Hold'em this Saturday on the 26th of January at the old Vickies, the old Alp Lodge for fundraising for the Clay Festival. So, once I get done with that, you're going to see a clean-shaven face. So once I get done with that, you're going to see a clean-shaven face. I'm going to look as gorgeous and beautiful as Chris, you know, after after I shave all this. But I stand for questions.
Any questions for Chair? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Anderson.
As of yesterday, we're at sixty-one point two-one percent of the twenty-eighteen property tax collections during the month of since December the twentieth, we've collected a total of one-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-one-fifty-two-zero-three and that's the county's portion of the of the revenues that we collected. We collected a little under two million dollars for all entities during that time period as well. So I want to thank my staff for keeping things going and while we, my chief deputy and I went up to the legislative conferences, most of you did too, and it was a learning experience for her and and I think it's it's a good thing. I want to welcome the newly elected. I haven't really had the opportunity publicly welcome you guys and also the existing crew. We got to move forward, we got to keep going. We do have the taxation revenue is still in our office. They should be leaving possibly Friday. While I was up there, I did talk to Mr. Daryl Luhon and I asked him for ETG and he looks at me and he says, what do you mean ETG? And then the supervisor of his examiners comes up and he says, extra time granted. And he says, he says, what do you, what do you, what do you mean? I said, well, you've got a very capable person, Mr. J.J. Jacob Portillo, that's down here in our in our county by himself. And we've had as many as three auditors at one time come down here and they have not been anywhere near as successful nor dedicated to the case. There was a lot of hardships being what we call the Carl contracts where people were just told, ah, give us a hundred bucks and come in and pay fifty dollars a month and we'll take it off the sale list. And that was happening and guess what? Constantly on the delinquent list. Well, this gentleman had a hundred and eighty-some accounts to deal with. He's been dealing with them. There's still going to be about forty-some left when he leaves on Friday. The ETG was out, I was asking him to grant him more time in our county, but apparently they're not going to accept that. But just yesterday, one account over seventeen thousand dollars was collected. He's really, I mean, I don't know where he finds the addresses and how he tracks these people down, but I mean, people that we've been trying to locate, we always try to be proactive and send our delinquent letters out to to our taxpayers to tell them, you know, you need to pay this or it's going to go on the delinquent list. And, you know, we get them back. We've got the boxes of the return mail that we we still work. Well, he's been very good at tracking down a lot of these extra-long-time delinquencies and he's doing an excellent job. So of course, our girls are assisting him as well and trying to, and even Teddy in the solid waste department, just finding the locations and helping him track all that through his solid waste buildings and stuff like that. So, you know, really, we really had hoped to be do had had get some extra time granted, but don't think so. But he still has them set. So we're looking at probably the end of March, first of April for our tax sale and we'll see where where that goes and we have any questions?
Questions for Mr. Anderson? Thank you for the report. Much appreciated. Mrs. Castillo. Okay, thank you. Commissioner reports. Mr. Salas?
Yeah, I think I'll forego my tip. Mr. Edwards?
Actually, I do have a brief comment and I promised a constituent that I would make this comment. So last July, when when we made the decision to have the hospital remain local, one of the things we talked about extensively was that if the community really wanted the hospital and remain local and the community would have to step up to the plate and support the hospital. Recently, I was having a conversation with one of my constituents who was talking about how how substantial the shortage is of volunteers at the hospital. And so I promised him I would make a pitch to the public today in my commissioner comments to please consider volunteering at the hospital. It's a very important thing to do. That is the first thing that people see when they walk in the front door of our hospital if they're not going to be registered with those volunteers. Every time I walk in there, they are friendly, they say hello, they are so helpful, they are a very, very important part of our hospital and I would encourage you that if you have any plan to volunteer, that the hospital would be a great place to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, no, Mr. Grant. So you know, further commissioner reports, is there, I want to know how long the recess is going to be, but is there a motion to go into executive session in accordance with New Mexico statute, sanitized, ten dash fifteen dash ones, section eight, to discuss pending opioid, sorry, opioid litigation and the manager's goals and objectives? So move to the second.
Second.
So move to the second, all fair. All right. Okay, we'll go to the second session. Can we take a five-minute recess? Are we going to do the roll call? Oh, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Brown, are you aware that you will be entering executive session?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Chairman Fonse, are you aware that you will be entering executive session?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards, are you aware that you will be entering executive session?
Yes.
Commissioner Billings, are you aware that you will be entering executive session?
Yes.
Commissioner Solis, are you aware that you will be entering executive session?
Now we are in executive session. Can we take a five-minute recess?
Let's have a ten-minute recess.
So we'll convene in the room back here at twelve eighteen.